I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, December 7th. Could I have a roll call, please?
Joe Schenk, present.
Josh Sexton-Duranian, present.
Veronica Cal, present. Please join the flag of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being taped recorded. It is also live on Channel 9 and it will be posted to YouTube after the fact. Chairman's additions or deletions, I have none. Chaz, or Joe, or Ross, do you have anything to add?
All set. All set.
Thank you. Public comment area, is there any public comment to be made?
I do, Veronica.
All right, Laurie, go ahead.
If you wouldn't mind, I meant to bring this up before, but you know, I've been gone for a bit. Before I left in October, I was noticing that oh, it's eastbound trucking, towing, eastbound towing was showing up at Country Estates again. And I reported the situation to the police chief a couple of times, dropping off a full folder of the court decisions, well, all of the documents actually, as well as the court decision that was for damages against Country Estates at 5 Turnpike Road. And eastbound never paid it. I reported the, what I thought was unethical behavior of this company to the police chief. And I'm thinking nothing's been done about it. So I want to report it to you guys to please look into that and see why I'm still seeing their trucks here. Now, I do understand that it may have been somebody from the complex itself that called for a tow and it was AAA. And so it wasn't through our police department. But if you would just look into that, I would greatly appreciate that. And thank you for all that you do.
Before you go, Laurie, can you give me more? Just, I guess I'm puzzled. I guess my first question, the question I would have for the police chief is who are, who is the town contracting for, for towing? That would be number one. Number two, is eastbound not supposed to be at Country Estates?
No, it is not.
And is there?
It did damage to us. It took a lot of volunteer time and effort to get all the documents together. We had one trustee that was making all the appearances in court. And we were not awarded all of our damages. We were only awarded some of them, yet eastbound paid nothing. I've had this discussion with the chief, the current chief, and
He will know, he will know.
He should know about this because I spoke to him in February. In February this year before, I'm thinking contracts were going to be done in March. So I made sure to get him all the information in February. And he did acknowledge it, so I know he has it. But I guess if I hadn't seen the company there twice in October, I probably wouldn't have thought about it. But we've not been compensated per the court order. And I don't think it's right for the town to have a contract with these people. It's just my opinion, public opinion here.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Joe, go ahead.
No, just as far as Laurie, as far as contracts, yes Laurie, you're right. There are two contracts in the town of Townsend. Both of those contracts have hired this year of March. They have not been renewed. I do believe the police department is working on it. However, there, I would say technically, there is no, no tow company under contract in the town of Townsend at this time.
Okay, so I guess.
I don't, I don't see how this is a town issue.
I guess the only issue I would have is who are the, who are the towing contractors in town? And then I'm not sure. We can talk about the other side of that. That sounds like a court thing and I don't know how the police are involved in that.
They actually did the investigation. There was a officer, longtime officer, who spent quite a bit of hours between the trustee, was not me, trustee on site. As well as, this involved our septic system, covers that were broken by the truck driving over the front lawn after midnight on a Friday night. So there was a police investigation done and it did go to court. That's all I can tell.
Okay, is there some sort of order that, that the towing company is not supposed to be at Country Estates at all? That was court ordered?
I know that Country Estates told, I don't, I can't answer that question. But the chief has the file and I don't have it with me, I'm sorry.
And when did you last speak to the chief?
In February, before the contract was due.
I think what we can do is we can look and see about the towing contracts for the town. But I think perhaps you might want to approach the chief about the issue.
Okay, I did do that and I have not heard back from him. But thank you for listening.
No, since February? I'm saying, checking with him again now. February was a time ago, like 10 months ago.
All righty, thank you Veronica.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other public comments? All right. Let's move on then to review and approve the meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for 10/25/2021?
I move that we approve the selectman meeting minutes for October 25th, 2021.
Is there a second?
A second then.
Any comments? Okay, all right, all in favor of approving the minutes for 10/25/2021?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. The 11/8 minutes, I'd like to hold off on those. Is that all right with you? How about you, Joe, are you okay with waiting on the 11/8 minutes?
Yeah, November 8th, okay, yeah, I hold them.
All right, we'll move them to January. Thank you.
1/4, right?
Yes, that's correct. All right, are we at, are we at 6:10 for the?
6:09.
6:09. All right, we're just gonna have a moment. And as soon as that switches, we'll go to the FY22 tax levy public hearing. And Vicki, can I just ask you? Do you open the public hearing or do I?
I also have everybody sign this for me.
All right, thank you. Do you want to read the legal notice as the clerk? All right, I'd like to open the public here, tax levy public hearing at 6:10 PM. Chaz has circulated the sign-in sheet. So if everybody that's present could sign in. And what can we do about remote signings?
I can put those in.
Okay, all right. Chaz, could you read the public notice?
Memory endum dated November 3rd, 2021 to Lowell Publishing Legal Ads. The legal notice, Town of Townsend Public Hearing, the Board of Selectmen will conduct the public hearing on Tuesday, December 7th, 2021 at 6:10 PM in the Selectmen's Chambers, 272 Main Street, Townsend, Massachusetts, for the purpose of determining the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of property for the fiscal year 2022. This hearing is in compliance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56. This was published in November 19th edition of the Inishoba Valley Voice.
All right. So I guess at this point, I ask Vicki. All right. Would you like to introduce yourself and then go ahead to recommend residential and commercial factors? Is that it? Okay.
Carol Conaty, I'm on the Board of Assessors. And the board is recommending a residential factor of 1 on our tax rate with a small percentage of the commercial and industrial businesses being less than 8%. It doesn't make sense to do any shift with different tax rates just because we're not going to see any return. You could up the commercial, but it's only going to change the residential rate by 8 cents. You know, for every dollar the commercial would go up, the residential rate will be down in a sense. The percentage in Townsend is almost 90% of the tax base, so.
All right, so is there, is, are you ready for public comments?
Sure.
All right, is there any input from the Board of Selectmen or from the town administrator?
I believe if you have a split tax rate and you raise the commercial, does that also impact farmland as well?
Yeah.
So we increase the commercial, actually increases farmland.
Yeah.
May not be what you want to do here.
But Chaz, anything?
I just want to verify that I have, just for the record, I added on the sign-in Elisa Struthers, Ian, I don't have a last name, Monica S., C. Walter, Andrea Wood, and Lisa Lawren.
Didn't get me on.
Thank you, Laurie.
And Laura Shiffrin.
If we're having a public meeting, do we have to have first and last name?
Not really.
Yeah, just as long as you have that.
You mean for the sign-in?
Yeah, so we know who's in.
Are you guys talking about, are you guys talking about me?
I believe so, Ian, yes, we are. Your last name.
Yes, is Ian Ordik Santiago?
Oh, he's our appointee. For Planning Board, okay. Thank you, Ian. What about Monica? What is Monica's last name? Monica, are you there? Sometimes you can be listed but not be there. All right, well, we have Monica S. All right, so is there any audience input on the tax rate? Would anybody like to speak about this? This is the opportunity to present verbal or written comments. Laurie?
Yes, I can speak to it as an assessor. And I would say that for the last 30-plus years or so, we've kept the tax rate sustained because unfortunately, we've not grown our economic growth. We don't have economic growth. If we had had some commercials in, or industrial endeavors that had increased in the town, we might be able to see a difference. But I agree with town administrator as well. We do still have farmland and it would impact the farmers. Thank you.
And Joe, introduce yourself and
I asked, is it not true that the tax, the, our, the tax base is shrinking and that our tax revenues were down over the last couple of years?
I don't think so.
No?
I think we've been showing new growth.
Oh, excellent.
Not a lot, but we've been showing new growth every year.
Excellent.
I know that for the, for decreased revenue, we don't have decreased revenue and nothing significant.
Excellent, thank you.
The housing, the housing production plan that we're actually putting together does show that we've been pretty stable in that respect.
I don't know where I got the idea that it would decrease, but thank you.
All right, any further comments? Then I think we are ready to vote.
So I'm ready for a motion to make.
I'm sorry, Ian, did you want to speak? No, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I was, I was trying, I having troubles with my button to unmute myself for some reason. But I, do we have any plans for economic growth for like, like next five or 10 years? Or it was just, or we just only relying on farmland and what we have currently?
I believe the answer to that is we rely on what we have currently. Although we do have plans in the works. Right now, nothing, we're relying on what we have.
Okay.
That will be, that will be a good project for the planning board is to work on economic development.
That's correct. All right. So anybody else? All right, I don't see any further discussion, so I think we're ready for a motion. Chaz?
I move to adopt a commercial residential factor of 1.0 as recommended by the Board of Assessors.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. All right, and with that, I would like to close the public hearing at 6:18 PM. Is there a motion?
I move to close the public hearing at 6:18 PM.
Second.
Joe Schenk, second. All those in favor?
Joe Schenk, yeah.
Josh Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. Thank you very much, Vicki, Carol, Laurie. All right, we have a little bit of time before our next appointment, which is at 6:30 with the Wild and Scenic River Report. So at this point, I'd like to move down to appointments, 2.3. Oh, no, we have, that's
You wanted 3.1? 3.1.
Let's go to 3.1. Is there, we have our candidate for treasure collector with us today, Melissa Dunne. Is there a motion to appoint Melissa as treasure collector?
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Melissa Dunne as treasure collector, pending successful contract negotiations, quarry check, and pre-employment physical with a one-year probationary period.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
We were very impressed with Melissa during her interview. And checking her references, I couldn't, don't know if anybody I've heard of had a more positive set of references than the people I've talked to. Her current employer is very sad about her leaving. I think fully supports her change in career and realizing it's a cut or commute by, what, a third, two-thirds?
Oh my God, two-thirds. I spend three hours a day.
So I'm very excited to have Melissa join us. I think to fit her in with Rebecca's schedule, we would ask Melissa to start on, I think it's Monday, January 3rd, pending all those other things being done. But I'm excited, I think with her finance and business background, that she will be a great asset to the town.
So we're glad.
Thank you, thank you for the appointment.
So we need votes. Go ahead.
Thank you, and I really look forward to working in town.
I'll wait for the vote.
All right, all those in favor?
Better or seen her because I can't see her on camera, but welcome aboard, I think.
It has to spin around to you, so. Vote, Joe, how do you vote?
Yes.
Josh Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. So Melissa, we are so glad to have you on the board. So I'm sure that you'll be contacted, yes? To have the quarry check and Mr. School and all that in place. So we do have an executive session today on the books to discuss a contract. But we haven't done that yet. So I'm not sure how, probably we'll talk about it and then Ross will contact you for that. And I don't know, is that how that usually works?
Yes, I'll send her a draft contract. Hopefully signed. And Carolyn will get in touch with you to arrange all the quarry and the physical stuff.
Yeah. Okay, okay. So, so we should have that hopefully tonight, maybe tomorrow, or by next week, maybe the week after. Holidays and we probably have that 10th, so we'll do.
Either me or in a couple weeks.
Definitely before January 3rd.
There you go, for sure.
Well, it's great to see you again, to see you again and nice to meet you. And thank you. And everybody have a nice holiday and whatever. And we'll see you on the 3rd and I'll talk to you.
Actually, I'm gonna thank Melissa. All right, bye-bye. Thank you for coming in.
Absolutely, absolutely. Take care.
All right. Are we close, we're not there yet, right?
6:23.
Okay, so what else do we have here?
It's nice that we can start filling somebody's position.
It absolutely is, I agree.
Forward movement, Joe, forward movement.
Yeah, we're getting there. So 4.2, we, let's go down to that. We'll come back to 4.1 later, Ross has said, okay? For the special town meeting. All right, review and approve a change in DBA for Townsend Country Club from Townsend Ridge Country Club to Northern Spy Golf Club for license number 05634RS1286. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve a change in doing business as for Townsend Country Club Corp. From Townsend Ridge Country Club to Northern Spy Golf Club for license number 05634RS1286.
So is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I reviewed the paperwork, but I don't know exactly what the, it looked to me like everything was, was there that it was supposed to be, so.
That's what I thought too.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I've never reviewed the process, but it looked like there was a change and the change was on the right form, so.
Right, I would agree. All right, so let's have a vote then, all those in favor?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Sexton-Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. Discuss the Board of Health vote. I have a down tomorrow. We're going out of order. All right, so 4.3 is discuss the Board of Health vote regarding building access to the general public. So we received an email on Friday. The Board of Health had voted to recommend to the select board to go back to the intercom system at Town Hall. And they requested that we put this to a vote at today's meeting. So I guess is there a motion? And then we'll discuss, or do we want to discuss first?
Maybe discuss it first?
I would like
Okay, all right, let's discuss first. So Chaz, thoughts? And then we'll go to Joe and then Ross and then me.
I mean, I understand that, but I also did some research and looked at other communities around us. And it doesn't appear that they have gone down to the, this particular measure. I also have been, I mean, I'm in human services and the last that I pulled off, the Mass. Department of Public Health, they talk about the Omicron variant. As far as that is concerned, the, the issue, as far as I see it, lies in the non-vaccinated population. I believe that what standards we have in place right now, keeping masking and that everybody that does come into Town Hall lets them mask. Have we had anybody here that, that had, I mean, I, I don't see anything as far as
Everybody I've seen has been wearing a mask.
Right, right, so, and I haven't seen any, you know, we haven't had to lock down. So I personally feel that I'd like to go by CDC and what the Department of Public Health in Massachusetts is recommending, that we just be continuing on encouraging vaccines, wearing masks in all public places. And following the social distancing guidelines is what they're saying.
Joe, your thoughts on this?
I'm gonna kind of re, what, I mean, I, it's pushing just a little too deep. I mean, I've been in and out of Town Hall, I have not seen anybody that has not been wearing a mask. I think the offices that I've been in or gone by, they do a really great job. Usually only one person at a time in there. I think if we lock downtown hall, it's going to create more of a problem. The waiting area to get the board person to come open the door, then bring them. I just think, as Chad stated, just follow the guidance of the CDC. And I think we've been doing a great job. They've been doing a great job as far as I see and I hear on the COVID cleaning. So, you know, time's tough and stressful, everybody right now. And I don't think adding that burden on all of us is the right thing to do.
I'm all for keeping staff healthy because if we get it in one office, we could lose multiple. But I don't think it's necessary. Everybody has partitions at their door or at their desk. We don't really get swamped with lots of people in here at any one time. That might change when tax bills are due or dog licenses are coming up in April. But we can cross that bridge and we'll get to it. I think the advocate, the intervention of waiting, having the public wait outside during the winter for someone to respond to the buzzer is not good customer service. As long as people are staying out of individual offices, waiting at the counters and wearing their masks, I think we're in reasonably good shape. I'm trying to balance customer service and employee and resident safety. But I think we've got that balance working right now.
I, yeah, I think, at least from what I've read, it's if you're masked, masks and vaccinations are the two biggest. I, yeah, I think, at least from what I've read, it, it's if you're masked, masks and vaccinations are the two biggest. So, I would, I would encourage more vaccination clinics, like the one that's being held on Friday, you know, to, to do that, but I think that right now, I haven't seen a huge influx of people in Town Hall. And I think we've, we're requiring masks. I think that, I, I, I think that's good enough, right now.
Master required regardless of vaccination status.
That is correct.
That's, I think it's really.
Oh, and we do have the barriers.
And we're gonna open the doors wide open Tuesday evening. For town meetings.
For town meetings, that is correct.
So, it's a little contradictory to say you can't come in during the day in onesie Tuesdays, but we're gonna allow hopefully more than seventy-five here Tuesday night. Now, and I'll talk more about those precautions, but.
All right. All right, so.
I move that we take no action.
All right. Is there a second on taking no action?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of taking no action?
Joe Shank, yes.
Texting Iranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes.
And if I can just add though, I do appreciate the Board of Health tracking this on a weekly basis, and having extra special, extra meetings to address this, and would urge them to keep tracking and keep sending recommendations.
Right.
So, I think it's important that someone monitors this, and they could do a good job so far.
And with that, we could revisit in, in early January.
I think the situation is fluid, and we may have to do that.
Okay, at this point, it is six thirty-two, and we have an appointment for the Wild and Scenic River Report. We have Joan Lockwoods here with us, so if, did I say that right?
Yeah. Thank you for the time. As she said, I'm Joan Lockwoods, and I'm Townsend's representative on the Wild and Scenic River.
Joan, one second, I'm gonna ask you to come up here closer to the owl, mostly for the people that are on the Zoom.
I'm Townsend's representative on the Wild and Scenic Stewardship Council. And this, I believe, was our first full year as a council, so we wanted to give the select boards of the various towns a, a sort of a brief summary of our accomplishments in the past year. So, we wrote up this report, I put them in the mailboxes, does everyone have one?
Yes.
Love, do you want one? Thanks, Joan.
Joan, me Joan, Joan, me Joan.
Yeah, Joan S, Joan W. So, I won't read the whole thing, but we tried to get it down to one page, but we really had a lot of accomplishments this year, and we didn't really, couldn't find something to throw off. So, just in, in, in sort of a high level summary, we use National Park Service funds that funds our council to do various projects, and one of them was to give small community grants, to offer small community grants. And in our first year of the program, we had, we gave out seven grants, I believe, six. And I'm proud to say Townsend received two of them. But I listed all of them here just to maybe plant seeds of ideas. I know that Townsend knows already what they would like to apply for in the current grant cycle. But here's what some of the other towns have been doing, some of them have planted trees, some of them have made walking trails from their, from a parking lot to a town park. One of them started an invasive plant committee in, in, in prepping. So, there's some interesting projects, you know, in air, I expect we will see over the coming weeks and months some new signs pointing to some of their waterways, et cetera. So, on, on the backside, one of our biggest projects is, is the Forest Legacy, and this is a federal program, which a lot of work went into, and was approved at the state level and submitted to, at the federal level to protect, like twenty-five hundred acres, and Townsend was involved in this as well, estimated at about fourteen point four million dollars worth of land. If this gets approved at the federal level, all of these lands will be protected. I think that has moved since from maybe expecting to hear in October to more like expecting to hear in February.
January.
And the thought is, if maybe it's not entirely approved, maybe it'll be partially approved, and we continue to try. So, are there any questions on any of this?
I, I guess what I'd like to do is go over what, what funds were expended in Townsend, just for people at home that might not know.
Under the Forest Legacy?
No, under the Wild and Scenic Community Grant.
There was, so Townsend, the Town Committee of Veronica and Roger Reposa from the Cemetery Parks Department, and.
Jen Eaton.
And, yeah.
Bill from CBA, Jen Eaton from Conservation.
Several people.
You? Well, not you, you couldn't, you weren't for that one, but.
Received.
From Recreation.
Received thirty-eight, three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to protect the Swanacook River by restricting motor vehicle access along the riverbank at Adams Dam, and encouraging pedestrian access, access from the public parking lot at Jeff Street. So, a lot of this was finished, the group took care of all the permitting, got their orders and conditions, their DEP file number, and then installed the gate to stop trucks from driving in along the riverbank near Adams Dam, and apparently, so they may continue the work to install some signage, and improve the, the walking path from the Jeff Street parking lot.
There, there were signs ordered, but I don't think they're in or up yet.
So, in addition, so Townsend was the only town that won two grants. Townsend Historical Society also received, they received fifteen hundred dollars to support a huge project they're doing to preserve and revitalize some work along the Spalding Cooperage. This, this will, they're, they're currently looking at historical architects. This particular grant, this fifteen hundred dollars is only kind of a miniscule part of the massive project that they're looking to do. So, then other highlights, we've been hosting breakfasts for conservation professionals, conservation agents and professionals with, with regional experts in, in headwater streams and habitat protection, and these are gonna continue on. And by the way, I'll, I'll give some of this material to the, our Conservation Commission as well. Some other things there, I'm not sure how much you'd be, there's some land stewardship projects going on, such as developing some, some flyers that can be distributed to the towns as sort of a toolkit for invasives or, or on subjects like ATV use of conservation lands, looking to be a resource to the towns. So, so I'll leave this report with you, that about covers it, but I just would finish with an appeal that the eleven towns represented have a representative and an alternate, and I'm Townsend's representative. If there's anyone that shows any interest in, in joining me as an alternate, we really could use two people.
So, we currently don't have an alternate?
No.
So, there's some opportunity, we should put that up on the volunteer board.
Yeah. Keep an eye out for someone who's, who's interested in conservation and in college, and, and it, it's an awesome opportunity as well for networking, we have representation from the National Park Service, from the National River Watership Association, the Audubon Society, MACC, the Massachusetts Conservation Commission, so. Any other, any questions, any other?
No, I, I know, Joan, that you do an awful lot of work in this area, and I wanna say that I appreciate the things that you do and all the contributions you make, so thank you very much for everything you do for our town.
I will second that, Joan.
Thank you, Joe.
Ross, did you have a question?
Well, I just think that this report is, is very informative, and maybe submit this to Carolyn for her to put in the towns annual report.
Oh, that's a great idea. Yeah.
And the second thing is, you mentioned a couple grants, soon we will have a grant administrator.
Heard the rumor.
And part of that person's charter will be to report grants that have come in, so if nothing else, what this person knows is you've got these two grants, almost over five thousand dollars that came in. That person maybe they help manage that or administer, or whatever, but nothing else, let them report that as part of the total rollup, so, good stuff.
Yeah, that's great.
So, that, incidentally, that grant opportunity is currently open, and the deadline is February 1st. So, I, I think we already know what we wanna do.
For Townsend, yeah, where it's the next phase of the Adams Dam project, to hire, and, and when we get the grant administrator in the land use, to hire a consultant to look at the riverbank. There are steps going down to the river, right at the trestle back here at Jeff. Yeah, the steps are in horrible condition, they're falling into the river, and something needs to be done to preserve that bank, but we need someone who, who's an expert, who has some expertise in that area, and knows what to do to preserve that, so. That's what we were gonna apply for funds to fund the consultation for that. And then the following year is to do whatever they advise to find a grant to fund that, whether it's through this program or another program. So, it depends on the extent, good stuff. So, thank you very much, Joan, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, Joan.
Our next appointments are seven and seven fifteen, so, Ross has said. We go to, should I go to the announcements and then come back to the special town meeting after, or do you wanna? I don't know how much time.
I don't need much time for special town meetings, I think that's pretty much happening, so.
All right, so let's go to that. Five point four, let's turn that over to, no, 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 it's four point one. Review and vote for special town meeting warrants, and discuss other town meeting logistics.
So, I think you've already voted the warrant, just 'cause it's been posted, so that's done.
Right.
I've met with Kathy and town clerk, and John Barrett as moderator, so I think we've got the, the meeting logistics worked out. T-Cam has been extremely helpful on, on getting the right equipment, so we can have audio in three rooms, microphones in three rooms, and potentially show slides of either motions or Zoom session in three rooms. Great Hall's been set up, Eneel set up chairs with a three-foot separation that Board of Health is looking for. We've got chairs upstairs on the balcony, they've been taped off for once, so they get separation. And we'll have people here as an overflow, and people downstairs in meeting room two, if they're not gonna wear masks. So, masks will require everybody, if they don't wanna wear a mask, they can go up to meeting room two. They'll be able to vote and speak from there. We will have, I said, social distancing, masks required, there's gonna be a lot of hand sanitizer and Lysol wipes coming off of microphones and things like that, and we'll have extra masks available. So, I think we're taking all the reasonable precautions to still be able to hold the meeting. And I've arranged for the cleaner to be in first thing Wednesday morning, and to sanitize everything that was involved in the, in the town meeting. So, the staff will be protected when they come in for that. Carolyn is Xeroxing copies of the warrant. Clients committee said they will submit a short report, it will be attached to that. They voted today to support Article Two, which is the, the budget item. And they supported it being used out of free cash, but if free cash is not certified by Tuesday evening, then stabilization. We will not be proposing a raise inappropriate to fund these articles, because we are very close to the town's money limit. Choices are free cash, stabilization, none of them are desired choices, but this late in the year, it's the only option we have. I sent a draft of all the motions to town council last night, so we should have those back tomorrow or, or Monday, so I think that's, so. I think we've got special town meeting planned, ready to go. I was gonna mention my update, but anyone who doesn't know, special town meeting is Tuesday, the fourteenth of December, at seven o'clock in the Great Hall. And I hope we get more than seventy-five people, so we can hold a meeting.
Right, the, the light, the lighted signs are up, I don't know if I saw it at the common coming in the evening, so, we have that going, so.
When town council approves that, could you get that to me right away, 'cause I'm putting together the slide deck that we're doing for the warrants?
Yes, but what are you doing for?
I'm putting on a PowerPoint presentation that they're gonna be putting up on the screen in the Great Hall.
Excellent, yeah, I thought I was doing that, so.
I have it all set, we, I agree that T-Cam has been very, I've been working with Dave, and we're also doing on Saturday, the eleventh, we're doing a dry run-through, so we're gonna have everything here and try out all the, the sound equipment and all of that kinda stuff.
Good, and you and I should talk briefly, so we're on the same page on that.
Yeah.
Library has donated, or not donated, I'm sure they didn't think they were doing that, they loaned us their owl, Water Department Day was over today to drop off another projector, so we've got projectors for every room, we've got laptops for every room. I think we've got, we found.
I think we're gonna need that owl from the library, we were talking about that, so, so we'll talk afterward.
Yep.
Do we have a moderator for both of the other rooms?
No, they're gonna need two.
John knows that he needs to get them.
Okay.
And I was gonna leave that to John to.
Okay.
Find who needs. So, is there any other logistics that we haven't covered, that we need to know about before Tuesday night?
More than seventy-five people.
I have a question, please.
Laura, go ahead.
So, if there are voters online, we will not be able to participate?
Correct, the Zoom sessions will just be to connect the three rooms together, not for public attendance?
I, I believe, I said being, it will be on channel nine, but not for participation purposes.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and state law hasn't gotten caught up to Zoom technology, so state law requires people to be present and checked in before they can vote.
Yeah.
So, voting will not be possible through Zoom.
Or nor comments, only viewing on channel nine table.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Hello, Larry.
Anybody else have anything else on the special town meeting? I can't think of anything else.
No, I can't, Ross, thank you.
Yeah, Ross and Chad, thank you very much for getting this set up. Carolyn for going on copying.
Yeah.
So, all right. We still have about ten minutes, so let's go down to the announcements and communications. We had several resignations, just to. We had several resignations, just to acknowledge. Officer Paul Theodoulu from the Townsend Police Department. Julie Byers from the Dog Park Committee. Sue Liscio from the Finance Committee. Alisa Struthers from the Friends of the Bandstand. And Thomas Davis from the Council on Aging. So some of these, the Dog Park Committee, if you're interested in finance, contact John Barrett. Friends of the Bandstand, I'm not sure who you contacted with that.
Carolyn.
Carolyn and Council on Aging, the Senior Center. If you're interested in those, there are also lots of openings on the website. So if you're interested, I'm especially interested in people volunteering for the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee and also for the Committee on Disabilities. Because hopefully we're about the ADA document grant that we put in for as well.
In addition to the finance committee, there's also openings on the Capital Planning Committee.
Yes, capital planning as well. So if you have some time and you're willing to help the town out, please consider volunteering. So I also had a couple of other announcements or, well, this is, this is communications. Karen Clement, okay, so I guess I want to announce that the Holiday Fair for the Friends of the Library is Saturday at the library from 11, no, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, December 11. There is a public service announcement running on channel nine for that. And it's also on the website and the Friends of the Library Facebook page. So they are requesting that since we would like the crafters and volunteers to park at the area schools to leave room for the shoppers, it was discussed that the Council on Aging Van could possibly be requested to transport during the day. So this way, the volunteers would be parking at the various schools. And the Council on Aging Van could bring them and take them back to their cause. So that way, people who are there to shop can park at the library and, you know, right in there. So they asked for permission to use the van during the day. Donna Howard is available to drive. Similar to Earth Day use, the friends would be responsible to pay the driver. So is there a motion?
I move that we allow the use of the senior van for the Holiday Fair at the library.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
O'Shank, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. So I'll send an email to Karen, letting her know that we voted to allow that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This question, I don't know on the acknowledgements of resignation. Are we going to do any exiting interviews with anybody? I thought we were going to try to start following up.
So I contacted Paul. I've not heard back about an exit interview from him.
Okay.
The others are volunteer positions. And we don't typically do exit interviews to volunteer. So for employees, is that right?
Yeah, that's what I, but then, yeah, I didn't single up anything.
Yeah.
All right, so Ross, sounds like you're on top of it.
Thank you, Ross.
As long as it sounds that way, it's fine.
All right. The other thing I had was I've been getting emails for the MMA conference in January. Have you guys been getting those too?
Yeah.
They should be in your email. So I just wanted to point it out. If, if I went last year, it was online last year and I attended. I found it pretty helpful for me. I was a new selectman.
Was it during the day?
It was during the day. Yes, it was. And I believe that's the same. It's in-person this year, January 21st and 22nd. And I'm trying to think what days of the week it's on.
Friday and Saturday.
It's a Friday and a Saturday.
Saturday is more of a business meeting. But Friday, there's usually exhibitors on the floor. And then there's several very helpful work sessions, you know, training sessions.
I know. I went to one on police reform last year. I went to a legal one, changes in different laws. I, for me, it was good last year. So I would, I would, I mean, it's up to everybody.
Yeah, I'm planning to attend the Friday.
Have you registered already?
No, my password wasn't working.
I haven't registered yet either. I'm going to plan to go for Friday. I don't know about Saturday. But it's $195. That's the reduced if you register by January 12. After January 12, it's in-person only and it's $245. So and I would probably attend Friday only. And I didn't look to see if they had a cost for Friday only. But.
And there's usually a charge for dinner that night.
Yeah, I don't know if I'll stay for the dinner, but yeah, there is. Let me see, on the evening dinner and entertainment, which is $49 additionally. There's a Women Elected Municipal Officials Leadership Lunch. That's $45. I did, it was like a seminar for women last year that I did go to. But anyway. I don't know about this yet. So I just wanted to point that out to everybody for Joe, Jess and Ross and me. If we're. Joe, I didn't hear that. You're breaking up.
I'll still be out of town. I'll be coming back the day after them, so.
Okay, all right. So that's that.
I don't know where I'll be at that time, so.
Okay, that's true.
Yeah.
All right. So that was all I had under announcements. Did anybody, let me just check my, my list here and see if I have anything else.
Okay, I could move on 5.52.
That was it. That was all I had. So you want to do 5.5? Okay, let's do that motion.
I move that we review and sign payroll and build payable warrants out of session for the balance of December.
Second.
Joe?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Okay.
That's six in Durianian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right.
And I think there are a bunch of licenses to be signed tonight if you haven't already. Joe signed them today.
Okay, I'll sign them before I leave.
And I will too.
Okay, and I haven't signed the warrant yet either, so I will do that. All right. Where are we at? 6:58?
What about 5.4, just next meetings?
Okay, let me go to the next meeting. Our next meeting is the special town meeting on December 14 at 7:00 PM. So please attend. We're looking for as many people as possible to get to this meeting. And after that, our next regular meeting is Tuesday, January 4 at 6:00 PM. So there will be no meeting the third week, hopefully, yes, depending on where we are. But the intent right now is not to have a meeting on the 21st. But yeah, if we do, it'll be posted. So. All right.
6:59.
6:59. All right. We're going to move up to the joint meeting with the planning board, which I was told was not necessarily has to be a joint meeting because it's the appointment of an associate member as opposed to a regular member. But Lance, I see you're on, so is that the case?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to appoint Ian Ortiz Santiago as an associate member to the planning board for a term expiring June 30, 2022?
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Ian Ortiz Santiago as an associate member to the planning board for a term expiring June 30, 2022.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Anything further to be said?
Do you want to hear Ian?
Yeah.
Hey. Yes.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is, well, as you guys know, Ian Ortiz Santiago. I've been working around old United States, then Afghanistan with the military, doing interrogations and, and creating the world a better place, I guess. And, and I've been part of multiple planning boards, not exact, not the ones as like a town planning board, more like how to go forward with specific requirements in the battlefield. So I thought this would be a good way to start civilian life. That doesn't have to do with, well, battle. So, so, yeah.
Bring the battlefield still, Santiago.
Well, thank you very much for stepping up and I appreciate, I appreciate you wanting to help us out because I know the planning board has a lot on their plate right now. As you heard earlier, yet another thing has been placed on their, their agenda, but.
Yes, I've, I've, I've been, I have the blessing to have been part of the, or at least look at most of the, the meetings that they come, at least I think since November. And I've been keeping an eye on things that I have to learn and how things work. And it's a lot. You guys do a lot for the town that no one sees. So that's pretty cool.
Well, we appreciate you stepping forward, so thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And you'll be working with a good group of people, Ian. You'll be honored.
Did we vote?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
O'Shank, yes.
It's in Durianian, yes.
And Veronica Cowell, yes. So welcome, Ian.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, Lance.
Pardon me?
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Lance.
You're welcome. Our next appointment until 7:15. I always said that we moved so quickly. Town Administrator up in the court. Should we start that? We have about 12 minutes.
Yeah, I can do it less than that. I don't know, do you have?
I do not. Thank you.
Well, some of this we've covered already. We mentioned that we've got Melissa Dunn as a new treasure collector. But we'll put a plug in that we are still looking for a town accountant. And I asked Carolyn to get it reposted on the internet today.
Oh, I, I should also tell you, I talked to Jennifer on Friday. And she said that Nicole Fugaro, who, who is the principal at CSS, she had some names of people that could be temporary if we need them. And I asked Jennifer to send those along. So, yeah, so we need to get someone in.
So I talked to Terry today, who's been filling in as interim for town accountant, doing a great job and busting her butt to do everything with a limited hours. She needs to start cutting her hours back in the next calendar year. But I think she can work as she is now for three to six months before she gets as, as a problem. And I told her somehow we would have somebody in before that runs out.
She is doing a great job.
She is. It would be great if there could be some overlap or if we could keep Terry for.
Yeah, she just has to watch her total hours.
Right, okay.
Bless her for being available.
Right.
Did we post for the town administrator to?
Somebody said they didn't see it today, but it did go out. I don't know.
Do you want me to post it? If you sent.
Who was posted, who was going to post it on, in my website?
Do you want me to?
I, we were just, we voted on it on Monday.
That it was going to be sent to Carolyn.
If you send it to me, I will get it posted.
Okay, do that. I didn't realize I was supposed to post. Okay, all right.
I don't think I have the posting.
It's, yeah, it's in SharePoint under Town Administrator Search. Same place as the Agenda Meetings Correspondence.
We were interviewing two people that looked very promising for the grant administrator position this week. And I did call and email the gentleman in Connecticut and tell him thanks, but no thanks.
I also emailed the person in Indiana.
I spoke to the board last meeting, but I did sign up for the opioid settlement funds, which could net the town $48,000, which I have to use for those reasons. But that's in process. We talked about special town meetings. I won't do that again tonight. I would like to review with you what I'm proposing is the FY '23 budget guidance. Seems that we're still, I'm still working on the special town meeting, but we need to start thinking about the annual. And I've run this by the finance committee today and they're okay with it. But basically, I think this coming year is going to be tight. I mentioned, we are at the maximum levy limit, which means if we spend more than our 2% or 2.5%, we're allowed a new growth, we run into a problem. And I don't want to be the one bringing in a proper 2.5 override budget. So I'm going to suggest that all wages that are held at 2% with the exception of union contracts and labor contracts that may be different, which is majority of them.
Right.
But we need to try to hold the line. Level services, meaning no new hires unless there's a really detailed explanation why that's needed. I'm figuring a 2% increase expenses in those line items, but realizing that inflation is higher than that. This may actually mean cutting some of the things people are buying. Capital should be limited to only seriously needing things and items that can't wait for the following year. And I'd like to have the budget information and the capital requests sent in by Monday, January 10. Is there anything else you'd like added or changed to that budget guidance?
I need some time to think about this.
That's okay.
But I had actually put this on the January 4 agenda.
I think way to send the guidance out to the 4th is a bit late. I mean, ideally, I'd like them back the first week of January, but.
Right.
I'm still sort of focusing on the special town meeting. And the 10th will give us time to.
Maybe this is.
Pull it all together.
Maybe this is a reason to have a meeting on the 1st. To talk about that a little bit more, but is that too late? Even if you're sending it out this week?
I was hoping to send it out.
Next week.
Wednesday or early next week. I'm certainly entertained any comments you have on, on budget guidance.
When you say level services, you know, I know that there was a request at special town meeting to increase hours for people. I know I was interested in increasing hours for the conservation agent. And then there was a request to increase hours for the highway department admin. So when you say level services, are you negating those increases?
This stage. This stage, I'm going to suggest that they don't make those requests unless they are convinced they have to have them, in which case they can present what they want. And it will be first to convince me, second to convince the finance committee, third to convince this board, and fourth to convince the voters. Yeah, I mean, it's easy to say no increases more than 2%. We have those union contracts that say differently. And we will, at this point, we're going to honor the union contracts. I'm not suggesting we reopen and negotiate them. Expenses, I know everything's going up, but I think we're going to be facing a very tight budget. As we start to pull everything together and get a better idea of our revenue, we may see that we've got some breaks. But, you know, you factor in health insurance. That I'm going to guess is going to be 6% to 9%. That's a big item.
Well, can we talk about health insurance in a minute? Because we did sign that agreement with NFP and we need, we need to have a committee or something.
So I've got a date picked out. I need to confirm tomorrow. I'm going to send out a note to the Insurance Advisory Committee representing all the employee groups to get them in. So we start, they can start hearing what potential increases might be and what the potential remedies might be, such as planned benefit changes. None of which is an easy process, but I think it's going to be cool. So we've got a couple of big numbers to impact the budget that I'm sure will be more than 2%. Health insurance is one of them. The school budget, I would be not expecting them to hit 2%, although it would be fantastic if they did. And no.
I, I don't understand. Okay, this is what I don't understand. Why are we, the town, required to hold 2%, but they, the schools, are not required to hold 2%? And how historically, over the past five years anyway, increased the budget, you know, like this? Why is it? Well, I guess we can just vote them down, right, and not approve the school budget?
Correct. The town could vote it down. Now, we're part of a region, right? So it probably takes more than one town to vote down the school budget.
Right.
I'm not attacking the school budget at this stage, anyway.
We don't know what it is, right?
But that is 50-plus percent of the town's budget. So we can cut departments $100 here, $1,000 there, and still not make up for what could be well over 2% from the schools.
Right.
And preliminarily, I would assume that it's going to be an increase this year because it historically has been.
You know, the regionals, the technical school said that the number of enroll of students from Townsend has gone up.
Yes, that's true.
Like a lot, which means even if they keep their budget level, our assessment could go up a lot. And I just think we need to be, we can control the municipal side. We can't really control the school side. Other than, I think, when we get further along, we need to make a firm statement from the select board and the finance committee and the town administrator to the school saying this is the most we think is appropriate. We start off with the things that we can control and that is, I will send the same budget letter to the schools.
So they know.
But.
Yeah.
Matt, is there something else you want to put in the guidance or different percentages?
Not different percentages. I know that I'm looking at 2% wage and salary increase. And I know it's 3% for unions next year because of the, and I don't think we have a contract for the next three years with the asking unions. Those have to be negotiated because this year was the third year of a three-year contract. So we still have that.
So.
We'll come back to this. All right, let's go. It's 7:15. So we should have, we have Wayne Dara on. Is.
Diane's on there too.
Is Diane on there?
Yep.
Why do I not see her? Oh, I see her. Okay, I see it. So we don't have seen it. Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, so at this point, I, is this an official public hearing that needs to be opened?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so I'm looking for the, in one minute, let me get mine. I'd like to open the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant, otherwise known as the CDBG grant. I, we're going to need a sign-in sheet, correct, for this?
It would be nice if we could do that.
Yeah, I have the one from the, just read, CDBG. So Chaz, if you could, circle like that and get the people that are here from online. That would be great. So we'll get that going and we'll start in a minute. Chaz, did you print the public hearing notice?
I did not.
I can pull it up on my computer. I'm looking to see. I think I skipped that one. Do you just want me to read it, Chaz?
Yes, please.
So I'd like to read the legal notice for the public hearing. Legal Notice, Town of Townsend Public Hearing, FY 2018 Community Development Block Grant. The Townsend Board of Selectmen will conduct the public hearing on Tuesday, December 7th, 2021, at 7:15 PM in the Selectmen's Chambers, 273 Main Street, Townsend, Massachusetts, 01469, to report on the progress and status of the town's FY 2018 Community Development Block Grant. Interested persons and organizations are encouraged to attend via Zoom. The information to attend via Zoom is as follows. I'm not going to read all that. It's in the notice by the Townsend Board of Selectmen. And this was published November 23rd and November 30th. And was it the Lowell Sun and the Pittsburgh Sentinel and Enterprise? Am I correct on that, Diane?
Yes.
Thank you.
And for the record, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Via Zoom, I have Andrea Wood, Cindy Bounde, Ian Ortiz Santiago, Monica S., Dave Fignoli, Laura Shifrin, and Lisa Luan.
All right, thank you very much. All right, at this point, I guess we would turn this over to you, Wayne and Diane, to present the report to the public.
Certainly. Thank you very much, Chairperson.
Let me just, before, before you start, let me introduce you. Wayne Dara and Diane Hansen are with Community Opportunities Group. And they are the organization that handles the grant for the town. Manages the grant for the town. So thank you, Wayne.
Thank you. Tonight, this is merely an administrative requirement. Whenever you have a community development block grant, you are required to hold two public hearings. The first of those public hearings is the one that's held during the app, prior to the application being prepared and submitted. It's to solicit information from the public and suggestions for projects to be included in the grant. And then sometime during the life of the grant, you're supposed to hold a second public hearing to review progress that you've made and what you've accomplished to date. That's the, that's the reason for tonight's public hearing. Normally, we would hold the second public hearing for an open grant while we're simultaneously with the public hearing for a new grant, but since we didn't do a new application, this is sort of a standalone public hearing. To date, we, well, for, for those who don't know, there were two activities underneath the town's 2018 application or grant. One is a housing rehab program, the goal of which was to rehab 15 housing units occupied by low and moderate income individuals throughout Townsend. The budget was established, assuming an average cost of $40,000 per unit. We have found that the average cost in our projects is less than that. Part of that reason is we've had to do a number of emergency cases that just addressed one or two issues at a property, such as a leaking roof or a failed heating system. So it appears if we are. Yes?
I'm sorry. You have performed emergency repairs? Is that what you just said?
Yeah, in a couple of cases, we had individuals who had needs that needed to be addressed immediately.
Okay, I'll come back with a question on that. Go ahead.
Okay. So it appears if we do end up spending the entire $600,000 budget, we're going to exceed our 15-unit goal. As a matter of fact, Diane, could you review a little bit the numbers to date in terms of units that have been completed, units that are in process, and units that are out to bid?
Sure. So 11 projects have been completed to date. Two additional, two have ongoing work. And two have been approved, but the work has not begun yet. I did, and I think this is what Veronica is alluding to, when some of the questions that came up earlier were how many emergency repair slash rehab were completed? And I responded that we didn't have any that were emergency cases per se. So that's why I think she had, she was going to come back to that. There were smaller projects, but they weren't for, you know, emergency in the sense that we do for CDBG.
Okay, I apologize for misstating that earlier then. So right now, with all the cases, open cases we have in hand, we will in fact meet our 15-unit goal for this program. And we still have money left to commit to additional projects.
So can I just ask again, this is from the questions that I had sent to Diane and she had answered. One of my questions was how many are on the list but still need to start the vetting process? So Diane, do you want to talk about that? This is over and above the 15 that Wayne just talked about. Is that correct?
Correct. There's seven that have been identified as additional possible projects. Three are in the middle of the vetting process. And when we talk about the vetting process, it's doing the income eligibility to make sure that they indeed do qualify. Of those seven, so three are in the process. I was supposed to meet with someone today and I heard back yesterday that they decided, because of the nature of all the information we asked for, they decided to withdraw. So as of this morning, it's down to six from the seven. But at the time that you, you know, made the request, there were seven in process.
Okay, the other activity we have under the FY 2018 grant is a supplemental fuel assistance program. I think most, I don't know how widely known, but obviously we've had issues with that program rolling that out. There've been a number of challenges along the way with that. One of them was we missed the transfer of federal fuel assistance management from MOC to the Farm Workers Council. So we were sort of barking up the wrong tree there. Last year, we finally connected with the Farm Workers Council, but they were unwilling to provide us with information on towns and residents who had either applied for assistance and were denied or had fully utilized their federal fuel assistance allotment.
So Wayne, can I?
Yep.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Do you want questions at the end or do you want them at the point where you're discussing something?
I think, I think we'd do best to hold questions to the end if you're comfortable with that.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so it's a small part of the grant. It's, it's less than 4% of the grant. It's about $26,250 worth of assistance on an $800,000 grant. And the other thing about it is federal rules and regulations do not allow you to replace one federal funding source with another. So in order for someone to be eligible for our assistance, they either have to have used up all of the federal assistance that's already available to them or not meet the income limits for the federal program, which are lower than our income limits. So there is a, there's a possibility that someone makes, earns too much money to qualify for the federal assistance, but they would qualify for our assistance. But they need to apply for the federal fuel assistance first and get denied before they can come to us. So the heating season runs from November 1st to April 30th. So we're one month, approximately one month into the heating season. Under the assumption that no one's used up all of their federal allotment yet. So we still have time to market this program and hopefully help some folks this heating system, this heating season.
Do you want my question now or do you want me to wait?
I really don't have anything more to say definitively, so I think we should start working through questions.
Okay, so I guess I'll start on this because we're talking about fuel. That is, we are non-compliant with the grant contract. And by December 31st, it appears that we need to let the HCD know what we are doing with respect to that. So my questions for you are, since the heating season started on November 1st, has anything happened as far as fuel assistance goes for this year? Has anybody contacted the people who managed or attempted to manage it for us last spring? And then other question is, what happened in the spring of 2019? I know what happened in the spring of 2020 and my understanding was that fuel assistance hadn't even been touched until then. Is that the case? And if it is, why is that the case? So I guess I want to know what was done in 2019 and what has been done so far for this heating season?
I'm sorry, but I, I, I don't know what you're referring to in 2019. This grant's been going on for so long, I can't remember when we actually got under contract for the administration of this.
You got under contract in June of 2019.
Okay, so.
So spring of 2020 would have been the first time.
Right, so November 19th through April.
Okay, so my question, let me change the years. So heating season of 2020, because we did handle it for the heating season of 2021. Although there were no takers because we were late to the game. We didn't get there till April, March, April timeframe. So what happened the year before that?
It was. It was a position where we were ramping up out there. We were paying more attention to the housing rehab program, because it was the bigger portion of the grant. And again, I was making contact, trying to reach out to the wrong agency at the time. So it just, just an unfortunate confluence of events that led to us not getting any money out that fall. And then, the, the second part of that heating system was the beginning of the COVID shutdown, and that really impacted our ability to do much of anything.
Madam Chair.
So just one second, Joe. I just want to get one more question answered. What have we done for this heating season? It started November 1st, it's now December 7th. Has anything been done for this heating season?
Yes, I have reached out to Ms. Lisa Ghulie, who is the contact we have at New England Farm Workers Council.
And?
And she is being as non-responsive as she was last year. So I will, you know, continue to reach out and see what I can, see what I can do.
Do you know when your last contact with her was?
I sent her an email within the past week.
And prior to that?
No, that was the first time I reached out to her.
Can you send me that information, please? Okay, Joe, go ahead. That's, that's what I needed to know.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, I guess a question for you. I just sat here and I listened to you explain to us that you've been under contract down with Townsend since 2019. Can I first ask you, what is the contract amount of money that we are paying you for your services?
It's a $160,000 contract.
Okay, so now let me get real pinpointed here. So you sit here and you tell me, we are putting $160,000 into your corporation, or whatever, however it is set up, but yet you're going to tell us that you weren't going about it right, and you did it wrong. That's kind of a pretty hard statement to tell us, don't you think? You're the professional that's supposed to know this, that's why we're paying you $160,000, the guys as a community, to do the right thing. Do you agree with that?
I, I've, I've thrown myself on my sword so many times in front of you people, I really, I, I don't know how many more times I can say, "I messed up."
Well, but, okay, and that's, and I appreciate that, that's good. Thank you very much. But, there's a lot of money that your corporation is getting, that in the real world, the business, such I am as a business person for 49 years on my own corporation, I can't be jumping on the sword to my customers, time and time and time again, that I screwed up. So my point is, how are we going about fixing the screw-ups that you're doing? And guarantee that our citizens are getting the benefit of that grant, and you're not getting the benefit of the $160,000, sit back and don't have to do anything?
Well, I, you know, I can't guarantee that this money's going to be spent, because I can't guarantee there's demand for it. Last year, when we pushed and pushed, we ended up with, I think, four applications maybe, and none of them qualified. And it would be really much easier for us to administer this program if we had more cooperation from the federal administrator. You know, what I would like, what we initially asked for was a list of all of the Townsend residents who are receiving federal fuel assistance, so we could direct mail them information on our program, letting him, letting them know it's there if they run out of their federal assistance. New England Farm Worker Council would not provide us with that information.
Who else, you said you reached out to us? Who did you reach out to in our community? Did you reach out to anybody particular in our community to get that list from our community people? Who did you reach out to in our community?
I didn't reach out to anyone in your community. I reached out to the folks who are administering the federal program.
Okay. I just want to be, people to understand, of the 160,000 that you're referring to, that COGS paid for the entire grant, 8,000 of that is for administering the fuel assistance, okay? And we've only spent down 1,800, which was the ramp up. The majority of, of that money is for doing the housing rehab piece of it. So I just don't want people who are hearing this, think that we got paid $160,000 to put together a small fuel assistance program, because that's incorrect.
Well, I get that, ma'am, ma'am. I, I do, I do. But what I'm seeing for numbers, and by what I've been reading and understanding, and some of the things that I see in front of me, I, I don't think that this program is being administered and handled properly, if we're paying, if you're part of that corporation, such be it, that we are getting $160,000 worth of services. I think if we are paying you out of that grant that belongs to the town of Townsend, we should be getting, we should be being handled, our citizens, our residents should be able to know what's going on. We don't have to go to them and beg them. I would hope to God that your corporation would be out there publicizing, to make sure that this is getting done right.
How do you suggest we publicize it? I've been on, I was on the Housing Committee meeting, it's on the website. When people come in to talk about the housing rehab program, I ask them if they also have heating issues. I'm not really sure what else, you know, proactively we can do. You can't knock on people's doors and ask them if they have heating issues.
I, I guess, Joe, I will say that Diane has been here every Tuesday, and I can speak to this from June going forward to now. And
I am not picking on any one person, Madam Chair, I don't want to think, but I am just, I have been sitting, I've been a board of select person for almost a year. Back in September of the year prior to me being elected, these conversations were going on, and still to this day, a lot of these same questions are being asked, and it's a year and a half later. And that's my only concern. I mean, I, I want the Townsend residents to be the beneficiaries of whatever we can do, and they've got the money to make sure it's done and implemented right, and I want to see it done that way.
And I, I appreciate what you're saying, but no one, it's not as if people have come to us looking for this assistance, and we've turned them away. It's not like someone went without this assistance. It's, we don't have any demand for this program, right? We had variable message boards advertising this program set up in town, and we heard crickets. So, you know, I, I didn't write this grant, I didn't put this activity in it. I don't know what the person who wrote the grant thought about what the demand for this program was going to be, but, you know, no one's been denied this assistance, we just can't find anyone to take it.
I, I, Chad, did you have something to say?
Well, I, I, there's a, you know, I, I don't want to belabor a point, but I will say that there's 44 residents that could have taken advantage of fuel assistance last year. The reason why the New England Farm Workers was not, they don't release names, because that's confidential information. They also volunteered that if we prepared a letter and sent it to them, that they would then in turn send it out to the 44 people. And I don't know what the, the situation was, but that letter never got out to those.
No, we, we got that letter to them.
I refuse to sign an MOU to, that the names would have been released. I, I guess, I guess
There is no need for an MOU. There's no need for an MOU. They have no relationship with the program. They're not getting paid by the program, the money's not going through them, there is no need for an MOU. All they need to do is provide us with the contact information, or send this information out to them on our behalf.
All right. I'm going to ask, I know that Joan Savoy is here with us, and she has some questions, so I'm going to ask her to come up closer to the owl, so that people at home can hear. So she has some questions for you as well. She was the one that, when she became the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, she looked into the CDBG grants, so I know she spent a lot of time looking at this last year, and she was also the one that was interfacing between Lisa Ghulie. She's the one that established contacts, I believe, last spring.
Hi, Wayne, hi, Diane.
Joan, for one second, please. Joan, what document did you just give the board?
I just want to I emailed this, or these questions this afternoon, Joan. So you probably
Of the questions I'm asking.
First, I would like to speak, though, to a couple of statements made, that, so I got involved in this in December of 2020, and, a year ago, and I pretty quickly was able to go online and figure out that New England Farm Workers was the supplier of the light heat funds, not MOC. It was pretty public, easy access information. Also, I would say that the, we haven't, all of the marketing for the programs were done by Joe Shank, who was off the screen there, who put out flyers at his place of business. This gentleman here, Mr. Chad Sexton-Duranian, produced flyers and distributed them about, as did I. Townsend Ecumenical, TEO organization, was very instrumental, and they did a great flyer and put that in people's food packages. So I, I, that, one of my questions is about the actual marketing, but I do know it costs $600 to send out a postcard to everybody in this town. So that would have been a great way to market. I wrote, I, I wasn't contacted, Lisa Ghulie. I wrote an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, very plain English, very simple. I did forward it to you, Mr. Dara, as well as the former TA, and she, all she said was, "I will gladly, you know, get those 44 names going, I just need this MOU." And there was nothing magical about it, or legally challenging about it. And you did state that you were not going to enter into an MOU, and you said you removed your name from the document, and that was the end, that was the last word from Lisa Ghulie. So I would like to put that out there. And I do have your email saying you wanted, you wouldn't have any part of the MOU. I do also want to say that you, your contract with the town started on June, was, you signed it on June 3rd, 2019. So that means we missed the first heating season, beginning November 1st, 2019, and November 2020, and then, and this one. And I, I believe personally, the reason we haven't had people apply for heating assistance is because they didn't even know about the program, and it's pretty easy to let people know, look, just, you know, get your, show us that you were denied, or max out your benefit from New England Farm Workers, and you're good to go with applying for CDBG. Our terms on the CDBG are much more generous than the New England Farm Workers even. So that's what I'd like to say about that. So I have some questions, and I'd like to read them, Madam Chair, into the record, so that people in the town know about some of my concerns, and Diane and Wayne, I wouldn't expect you to answer these, but I would like the, the board to ask you to address them in writing.
So you want us to send these to them to
Please.
To address?
Yeah, okay. First question, there are 13, 14 questions. One, COGS' contract with the town is signed by Wayne Dara on 6/3/19, and by the former TA on 6/11/19. Explain why COGS stating in their December 6, 2021 email to the BOs Chair, as well as stated at a May 4, 2021 Zoomed BOs meeting, that the grant has been managed by COGS since the beginning of 2020. Provide documentation showing your contracted start date was indeed in January of 2020, and not in June of 2019, if that is the case. Two, explain why COGS paid almost $15,000 in November of 2019, if your start date was January of 2020. Provide a detailed breakdown of what that payment was for. Three, if COGS was having difficulty obtaining the list of town residents interested in the CDBG housing rehabilitation and fuel assistance programs generated at a publicly advertised public forum held by MRPC for a few hours at the library in February of 2018, why didn't you hold your own public forum instead of waiting for the MRPC list, which I know took about five or six months to get to you? Four, once MRPC was no longer allowed to be our grant manager, the town posted RFPs for grant administrator twice on the state site. Each ran for one month. One had an end date of 11/16/18, and one had an end date of 2/13/19. COGS' response to the town's RFP is dated 12/10/18, which is outside of both RFP periods. Explain.
Can you go back to that question? Because I don't understand the question.
Diane, don't, don't.
No.
Just let her go.
Okay.
On 2/26/19, the BOs voted to give permission to the then-town administrator to execute a standard form contract with Community Opportunities Grant for grant administrative services. Do you believe the contract you signed with the town in June of 2019 to be a Massachusetts standard form contract? Six, on 8/29/19, the grant's environmental certifying agent and former conservation agent signed an NOI for release of $600,000 of CDBG funds called a request for release of funds. It reads that on or about September 13, 2019, the town of Townsend will submit a request to the Commonwealth for the purpose of housing rehabilitation proposed in its Massachusetts Community Block Grant for fiscal year 2018. This NOI was not publicly advertised via a legal notice or announced at any conservation or BOs meeting. Explain who should have placed the legal notice for the NOI in the newspaper, and who should have made an announcement about it at a BOs meeting? Seven, at the May 4, 2021 BOs meeting, in which Mr. Dara was present, he explained an $11,000 line item. He said it was for MRPC's filing of the CD application, CDBG application, which was a $6,000 bill from them. And the rest was, if anyone needed a computer or a filing cabinet, et cetera. And that, wouldn't the town be the owner of those computers and/or filing cabinets once the grant period ends? Please provide receipts for the computers and filing cabinets. Eight, the, the DHCD sent Townsend our fiscal year 18 CDBG contract on 10/1/18. In it, they spelled out many grant agreement special conditions. In her response to that letter, over a year later, on 10/18/19, and almost four and a half months after COGS contracted with Townsend, the then-BOs Chair addressed some of those special conditions. Page one of the DHCD's conditions read, "The contractor must revise and resubmit to the department its community development strategy, indicating the town's approval of the strategy, and hold a public forum to discuss the priorities and the strategy." The then-chair says she was attaching the town's final community development strategy, but it was only a draft. Public records requests show no required CDS forms were ever held. Explain your involvement in drafting of the community development strategy. Why was a final version never vetted and signed? If you have a final signed version, please supply it. In the same letter, the chair said she was attaching the town's CDBG Citizen Participation Plan that included timeframes and deadlines for town residents under the grievance procedure. Was COGS involved in the drafting of it? Have you seen the CDBG Citizen Participation Plan and grievance procedures? Supply copies if you have them. Supply copies if you have them. In the revised grant management plan attached to that 10/18/19 response to the DHCD, we read on page one that from time to time, the CD Director will attend selectmen's meeting to answer specific questions or to report on the progress being made. So the CD Director would be the Community Development Director, and we don't have one. It would have been the land use coordinator, but records from the few months that we had one during the life of the CDBG shows no involvement from that quarter. So prior to the Townsend Housing Authority, Townsend Affordable Housing Trust's involvement in December 2020, and knowing that reporting to the town and BOS was important and required, did COGS ever offer to report to the BOS on the grant status? Please provide documentation if you did so. On page two of the grant management plan, that was in that letter, it states, "The program manager," that would be COGS, "will manage day-to-day operation of the community development program, including, among other things, marketing and outreach, as well as quarterly and other reports required by DHCD and the Board of Selectmen." Similarly, on page nine of the Massachusetts Community Development Block Grant Program Housing Rehabilitation Guide, it states that "marketing and citizen participation involves responsibility for selling the program in the community, soliciting program applicants, and ensuring that local citizens are involved in the ongoing evaluation of program implementation." Explain the marketing, community outreach, and selling of the CDBG to Townsend residents COGS has completed since signing the contract with the town on June 3, 2019, of particular note is the marketing and outreach to town residents per the Fuel Assistance Program, such as forums, meetings, advertising flyers you prepared and distributed, et cetera. Explain how COGS ensured that the quarterly and other reports required by the BOS made it to the BOS. Nine, after a formal monitoring of documents supplied by COGS on 11/3/21, the DHCD found noncompliance with the grant contract for the Townsend Home Heating Fuel Assistance Program. COGS was allowed an 18-month implementation period and filed three extensions. Town offices were closed due to COVID-19 on March 18, 2020. That's nine months from the time of initial contracting to town offices closing for three and a half months. From the time of town offices reopening in late June of 2020 to today is an additional 18 months, or 27 months of town hall being open while COGS was contracted, plus the three and a half months when employees were paid to work remotely from home, so we weren't really out of business. That's a total of three heating seasons. Explain why COGS paid itself $1,800 in 2020 for Fuel Assistance Administration when two-day no monies have been distributed to town residents for Fuel Assistance. Explain why Fuel Assistance was never advertised to town residents or presented at a BOS meeting prior to THAHT. Sorry, that's typical involvement in December of 2020. Ten, the DHCD requires COGS to document housing rehabilitations with before, during, and post-completion photos with the final quarterly report. Provide us what you have thus far. Eleven, as per housing rehabilitation, the DHCD required COGS to consult regularly with weatherization assistant programs for energy efficiency evaluations. Provide documentation of such. Twelve, the Massachusetts Community Development Block Grant Program Housing Rehabilitation Guide states in Section 7, Emergencies, that up to 20% of program funds may be used for emergency repairs, e.g., leaking, failed heating systems, failed septic system, et cetera, that are out of sequence from written application procedures used by the local program. Explain how COGS marketed and advertised to town residents that emergency repair funds were available to them. Thirteen, page 11 of the DHCD contract with the town requires that signage be posted at housing rehabilitation sites, stating that the work is being completed under HUD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, and the Mass Community Block Grant. Provide photographs of said signage as posted at housing rehabilitations. And fourteen, you may have answered this, Wayne. Why is this required second public hearing for CDBG being held 24 days before the contract expires? Thank you. Thank you, Board, for submitting those questions to COGS for their answers.
All right, so Diane and Wayne, we will get these questions to you. Going to take a look at and answer. I know I had sent a list of questions before. They were more on the count and that these are more detailed. I guess I have two more questions. Who administered the grant on the Townsend end of things? Who was your contact during the life of this grant?
Well, we typically work with the town administrator.
Okay. Thank you. Chaz, do you have any other questions or Joe or Ross?
I just have one general one for right now. Who officially is considered the grant manager? Is that COGS or is it, would it be someone here from the town?
COGS, COGS is considered the grant manager. That's why we are reached out to directly by DHCD. That's why we coordinated the monitoring. That's why we process the bills and handle everything. So there, there is no town position currently that I'm aware of that we interact, that supervises us, other than the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, so can I ask you, how did you get involved on the township?
I got dragged into a kicking and screaming, quite frankly. That's why the town went out, the town went out multiple times for administration services. Jim knew of us because I think perhaps we had worked in another town where he had been a town administrator, or perhaps he heard of us from someone else. But he kept reaching out to me directly because he couldn't, was getting responses from anyone else. I kept refusing the opportunity. Eventually, I gave in and submitted a proposal. I did not have sufficient staff at the time to manage the program. But I, I, I took it on, knowing it was going to be a struggle.
How, how was the, it sounded like you just said that, Mr. Kreidler, kept reaching out to you, kept reaching out to you. How were you being reached, Mr. Kreidler? And what kind of documentation or correspondence do you have of how this whole process went with you and Mr. Kreidler? And what is your relationship? You, you worked with him prior in another town? Is that what you're, you're alluding to or?
No. Where are you going with this? What are you trying to insinuate? What are you trying to insinuate? You know, this is, this is it. This is it, folks, you know? You've really just pushed me to my limits. I came here for a public hearing, not a public flogging, all right? I have no personal relationship with Jim Kreidler. He was your town administrator. Many town administrators know of COGS. He knew that no one else was replying, so he reached out to COGS. Why? Because we have a good reputation and we're trusted by our clients. You know, and I really, really resent the insinuation that you're making, sir.
Did make any, I just asked.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did. Don't play coy with me. This is disgusting.
Okay, I think at this point, we're going to close the public comment period.
Would anyone like to thank us for the 11 housing rehab cases that have been done? Would anyone like to pat Diane on the back for how hard she's been working to try and get the housing rehab program done? No, all anyone wants to talk about is $26,000 of heating assistance. And it just blows my mind. I just, I just blows my mind. I'd really like to work someplace where there was some sense that people actually wanted us there. You know, you don't need to, to kiss my feet, but it would be nice to know that we felt like
Okay, I think at this point.
For someone who appreciated it.
I will make, Mr. Dara, at this point, I will make a, a statement with respect to Diane because I didn't meet Diane until June. And I know that she did come in every Tuesday. She's been working very hard with residents. We did advertise the program and I think we've had many people apply since the beginning of June. I would say probably in the area of 10 to 15, maybe. And I don't know that any of those were on the list that I heard about last spring, that we had this long list. But I know that Diane has been working with the residents and that we have managed to get many more started. Probably as many as were completed have been put in process at least since the beginning of June. Would that be correct, Diane? Do you think that's about right?
I'm pretty close to that. I mean, I just would like to say also that we are in the middle of a pandemic and I came in, as soon as town hall reopened, I was in there, meeting with people masked, cleaning the conference room after, you know, probably maybe even wasn't the wisest thing to do for my own personal health. But I wanted this grant to be successful and I didn't want to lose the months and months that a lot of other communities did because they couldn't meet with homeowners. And so that's why, believe it or not, you're in the good shape that you're in considering what we've been going through for the past year and a half.
I, I do know that the past six months or so, there, there has been a lot of traffic. Before that, I wouldn't have been able to talk. But in any event.
We worked off of, we worked off of the original list. I reached out to everyone on that list. If they was, some people moved, died, whatever, and I reached out to the ones that were interested, sent them applications. There were plenty of people I met with that, you know, for whatever reason, decided, geez, you know, this isn't the program for me. So, you know, I've met with plenty of people, yes. Since we did a little more advertising, have more people come along, yes. As I talk to homeowners on their exit interviews, I tell them, if you have friends or neighbors that you think would be interested in this program, please reach out and mention, you know, here's my card, reach out to them. Because that's your best way of advertising is, is a happy customer. And so I've received, you know, people through that avenue as well. But anytime Jody or anyone reaches out with questions, I mean, I am calling them back the same day, if not the next day, to either get them an application, answer the questions they have, you know, move them forward through the process.
And so thank you for that, Diane. I will also say that, yeah, the Fuel Assistance is a small part, but it's also for the people that need it, an important part. And it's where we're going with clients. So anyway.
Right, but you're saying, you're saying that you spent all this money, sent all these residents postcards, and nobody seems to be interested. I mean, we can't be faulted.
No, that, that was, that's, that's incorrect. There were no postcards sent. They, I, I think the point that was being made there was that postcards could have been sent for a small amount of money and they weren't.
Well, maybe perhaps we should do that.
No postcards ever sent.
We've got administrative funds available to do that. Perhaps that's what we should do.
That would be excellent. By the end of December, I think would be good. All right, so we will be in contact with you, Mr. Dara.
Before we go, I have two questions, if I may, Chair, Chairperson. One is, right now, the grant is set to expire on December 31. Do you want to submit an extension?
I believe the answer to that is yes.
Okay. Do you want to continue to work on this grant with Community Opportunities Group?
I don't, I think with this short amount of time, we probably have no other recourse.
That's not what I asked you. I said, do you want to continue to work with Community Opportunities Group in this grant?
And I guess I answered round about. We will have to. Yes.
Do you want to?
I would like the work to be done.
Okay.
So as long as the work is done, the answer is yes. I mean, I have to write a response to this by December 31 to know what's going on and what is happening, so I will definitely be in touch with you.
Okay.
So that, that can be done. So.
And I just want to also say, I am in Townsend on Tuesdays, but I do work on Townsend other days of the week. So I don't want people to think this is eight hours or whatever that I spend on Townsend. I work on Townsend every single day in some form. I'm physically there on Tuesdays to meet with homeowners that, and do work that I can't do remotely. That I need to be in town hall to, to complete.
Yes, Ross, you have a question.
So Wayne, if we're looking into signing the new contract, do you have sufficient staff to support this contract now? You mentioned that when Jim asked you to sign it, you really didn't have sufficient staff.
Right, I didn't have Diane. I have Diane now. We're, we're good.
Thank you.
All right, with that, is there a motion to close the hearing?
I move that we close the hearing at 8:06.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
All right, I can tell, yes. Thank you very much and we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need to talk about how we're going to respond. And am I the one doing the work on this?
Do you want me to respond to him?
I can't hear you, Joe. That might be a good thing.
Well, I think we started off with saying you're going to send a list of questions to.
Which I will.
And you'll do that.
Yep, I've got that right here.
If, if you would like, Madam Chair, if you send the questions and we get the answers, maybe we can put that in a work session to work on it, or how do you want to do it? Because it's almost the end of the year.
I, I know, and the letter that I have from the DHCD says I have to respond and it's directly to me. It's not written to Ross.
So might I suggest that we, we send it.
Pay you so much as chairperson.
That's right, that's right.
I suggest that we, if, if, if we send, or you send a letter back to them stating that we had a public hearing on, and we'll, you know, what, just briefly outline what we've talked about. That we are, or that we are going to be applying for an extension, an additional extension. And once, once we, we convene in January, then we'll be able to, to give them more details.
Okay, corrective action. And just one second. The town must provide to DHCD a revised implementation plan and timeline for the Townsend Home Heating Fuel Assistance Program for the remainder of the grant period, including information on marketing and outreach. If this activity will not be completed by December 31, 2021, not only do I have to answer them, but I have to do this, the town must provide DHCD with an alternate use or the funds will be recaptured when the grant closes.
Madam Chair, may I suggest that that's COGS job, not yours, to write that? I mean, they are, they did, they are being paid to administer the tool systems. They should write the amendment.
Okay, so I'm going to do that because my concern, I had hoped that they had established contact with Lisa Goldholy from November 1st to now. That's a long time. And that's something that you would have wanted them to have started back in August or September. Being the type A minus that I am, I would have done it then. And it's not, hasn't happened yet. So that's a little bit of a concern, but I will ask COGS to.
It's not, it's there, it's on their plate.
Okay, all right.
When you send them that letter, Madam Chair, we ought to, we ought to fill him up a little more. He reminds me of somebody and I won't say any.
Best you don't, Joe.
Send them the Jones questions.
Yeah.
And then the statement from DHCD. And tell them that that will determine whether or not we sign the extended, extended contract with them. Their answers will.
See, okay, I will do that, but my concern without signing to them is we have people. What happens to the people? We have six months left on this if we extend. What happens to the people who are in process?
Maybe, that may be a good reason to keep the contract. Maybe, that may be a good reason to keep the contract going.
That's what I.
I will hold them, their feet to the fire, and say they need to answer these questions.
I would say, I would agree to answer those by the seventeenth, so that you can put your answer in by the thirty-first.
No.
Okay. Thanks very much. All right, where are we at on the agenda?
I think two.
I have to find my agenda. Did we get everything finished in Ross's report? I think I want to go back to that.
Your last thing in your report.
Since I don't have any time left in the month to think, it's all been booked up now. We should just go with the. We should just go with your budget guidance, Ross.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. That's what I think.
Okay.
You know, I haven't spent a lot of time thinking about this beyond what you have written there. And what you have written there is a little more tight than what I would have thought would need it.
You know, I would love to be able to say we can relax things when we see everything pulled together. And maybe the things that we say no to initially, we could say yes to in the February, March timeframe.
I will tell you, as far as budget goes, I would really like to see a better itemization of budget for all departments as to where these funds are going. The one that I can't figure out, there's one department that I can't figure out. And that's, that's that.
Well, I'm going to pull together, hopefully in my budget guidance, will be a budget template spreadsheet that departments can fill out, that we can then incorporate role into ominous budget, then Terry can then fall into her accounting budget.
Okay.
I don't have that magic spreadsheet yet.
Okay.
But send me the type of detail you want.
Okay.
And I think it will be more detailed than what shows up in the ominous budget. It's the town votes for, the town's going to vote for three or four line items per department. Maybe more for police and fire, but.
Okay, for me, it's things like equipment, equipment repair. But what equipment are we talking about? Equipment purchase, equipment repair? I would want to, I would think that when you did a budget, you kind of have that idea. I'm going to need to buy a new printer, copy stand, whatever. Or I'm going to have to have the old one repaired. So instead, there's just these numbers, and what's that for?
The budgets they submit should be detailed enough. Maybe if it's a couple hundred dollars, it's just miscellaneous items.
Yeah, I mean, I need paper.
But, but finance committees throughout number, if it's three thousand dollars or more, they want it itemized. And.
Okay, oh, good.
That's a good, that's a good.
I forgot all about the finance committee meeting this afternoon. I didn't expect to have to attend it.
You didn't have to. That's why I go to those.
Exactly.
But that's why I'm bringing it up this afternoon with the finance committee, and then again this evening with your board. And then I'll send it out.
Okay. All right. Let's go with this. I'm going to send you just a couple things. There were concerns that I had last year that I wanted addressed, and they might be in the detailed budgets, but I've never got answers.
I'm fine with what you propose.
Yeah, okay. Joe, are you good with what, with what Ross proposed?
Yes, I am. I'm going to, I know you're going to go into executive session, but I'm not going to make that session. So I'm going to leave. Anything need from me before I go out?
No, you take care out there.
Yeah, I think, but Joe, thank you so much.
You guys, yep, goodbye.
All right, we'll see you.
All right, so I will start working on the budget. If you've got things you want to hear, now's the time.
Okay.
You know, even if there is something that comes in that you don't, we don't understand when we're reviewing it, we ask the department, what is this miscellaneous item for twenty-five hundred dollars?
Okay.
And have them explain it, I mean.
Okay.
And, you know, we can get further into it, but you might want to schedule, and that's to be a finance committee, maybe given an event, a holiday Saturday meeting with the finance committee and selectmen. And each department comes in and defends their budgets.
That's what we did. I think that worked really well.
When?
We did it last year and the year before.
It's usually.
We got, we got called in, we got, yeah, we did. We got called in because the housing authority got called in. We had to present their budget, and if they had concerns, they brought it to our attention.
To the FinCon or to the Board of Select?
Both.
I would do it jointly so that we don't tie up every twice. I've seen it done on a Saturday morning early in March.
Well, we did try that, and we didn't, we mostly didn't have form for the committees.
You're talking last year.
I'm talking last year.
The year before, and the year before that, I think it was.
Okay, so.
But it was a Saturday meeting, and it was, yep, but it was the FinCon, and it was the selectmen, and we came in, and they said, whatever department, and if any FinCon or selectmen had questions about.
We scheduled those last year.
Yeah.
And we did, the departments came in pretty much individually, the ones that there were questions about.
I mean, some you may not have questions, and you may say you don't have to come in, but if they want to support their budget, maybe they do come in. We can get to that, please, further. Got to start off.
Okay.
Definitely collect the data.
All right.
That's all I've got, is the fact that I attended the Public Safety Holiday Dinner last weekend. It was at the newly-named Northern Spy Country Club. It was a very well-organized event, and I was really impressed that it was police and fire there together, having a good time. They had some five, ten, fifteen-year awards by each, for each department. They had some recognitions for some extra work, and they had some recognition for people who made some big mistakes. And the rationale was, these are people who show up every day. When you show up every day, you're going to make mistakes, so there's more chance for us to have something to pick up. But it was, it was nice, nicely done, and I want to thank the police and fire representatives for standing the invitation. And that's all I've got for tonight.
Thank you.
Other than what we're going to cover in the executive session.
All right, so with that, I guess, while we have the ASL reports, I am, I'm not.
Well, the only thing I would like to say is that the work department met yesterday, last night for the kickoff for the fitness court. There was, I want to say, ten people to form a group, citizen group, to listen to more of what they're going to do with the fitness court. Bonnie, who is the assistant director, has written letters that is going to go out, I believe, to community members, and I just want to thank the work department for the work that they're doing on that, and more will be revealed. They'll be giving us a lot of the marketing materials, I believe, and starting in January, once they get things off the ground.
Great. All right, so I think at this point, what we need is a motion to go into executive session. We have two executive sessions tonight. And was a return to open session?
You know, that's tentative, but.
Okay. How do we do that, though?
I think it's potentially returning to open session. We may do that and just say we've got nothing more important than adjournment.
All right. That one.
So I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of an open meeting. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. This is in regards to the Fire Union Collective Bargaining Agreement. And also enter into an executive session pursuant to General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. This is in regards to the treasurer-collector position. And we may, or we will be returning to open session.
All right, Veronica Kelly, second. All those in favor?
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. All right, returning to open session at nine forty-five. Is there a motion with respect to the MOU with the Fire Union?
Madam Chair, I move that we sign the MOU with the Fire Union for potential, potential collective bargaining agreement with agreed-upon amendments as discussed and sign out of session.
Second, all those in favor?
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. Is there a motion regarding the treasurer-collector contract?
I make the motion that we approve the treasurer-collector contract with amendments as discussed.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. And is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move that we adjourn at nine forty-six.
I second that. All those in favor?
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes.